It's a bold statement by the members of this council over the last two years who have worked to make sure that we can, as colleagues, provide the best service to our residents. So, thank you. And we'll go on to item number five. Counselor Hockenberry.
Adoption of the minutes? Adoption of the agenda, sorry. Wrong word.
Thank you. They are second to the adoption of the agenda. Deputy Mayor Pendleton, thank you. Any changes or additions to the agenda? If not, we'll go on to voting. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All right, the agenda has been adopted. We'll go on to item six, communications and reports from the town manager. Mr. Maniscalco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In terms of our COVID update, right now, total cases for the town of South Windsor is 1,683 total cases. 1,595 are past the time of quarantine, which means we have 36 individuals currently infected in the community and 52 have passed away. Additionally, in terms of our vaccination clinics, our town staff, in coordination with mass distribution out of Windsor, have issued 6,944 doses of coronavirus vaccine. We did have to move our vaccination clinic to the Evergreen Walk and a storefront there. That's been working out pretty well, from everything that's been reported. And I would remind everybody that even though you are vaccinated when indoors, it's imperative that you continue to wear masks, not only for your safety, but for the safety of everybody else. In terms of some exciting news, the state of Connecticut has announced kind of like an all-in reopening starting May 19. And the town hall and town buildings are following suit with that on May 19th as well. The town hall will open so that the public can walk into the building and meet in departments with staff. That being said, people will not be able to wander throughout the building. They will have to come in. They're still going to have to be screened. They'll have their temperatures taken. And they'll be escorted in throughout the building during that process by a staff person. But we will be opening the doors to the public. In terms of economic development, a couple of things, big items that are kind of on the plate that have gone on this last week that are kind of exciting, first of all, is the beginning of the construction of Costco. I think for any of you who have seen that, that is an incredible process that's occurring. Their estimates are to be opened sometime, hopefully, for around Thanksgiving. So, things are moving very fast there. It's a lot of fun to watch and exciting. And we're excited to look forward to inviting them as another member of our community. Secondly, I'd like to say welcome to Harbor Chase. They had a grand opening ribbon cutting just this last week. I had the opportunity to go tour it with a number of you who were also there. And it was truly an incredible facility. Great to see that. We've got a lot of other construction going on this summer, which is exciting stuff. And then on the horizon, we're looking at the Geisler's redevelopment, as well as Evergreen Walk. It does have a site plan proposal for a new grocery store that's coming into planning and zoning very soon. Also, just so that everybody's aware, we do have our summer in-house paving has been released. The roads that are in the list for in-house paving this summer are Wood Pond Road, Tallwood Road, Wild Rose Drive, Nutmeg Road South, South Satellite Road, Quarry Brook Drive, Evergreen Lane, Sycamore Road, Beech Nut Lane, and possibly Ident Road. So, those are all different roads that I don't believe 100% of them are going to be paved, but portions of them. Additionally, we just received approval on the fifth phase of Avery Street from the state, so that'll be moving forward. And we are working on getting temporary rights away to start working on the Main Street Bridge project. In terms of our town hall elevator replacement, for those of you who do have the opportunity to get into the town hall after May 19, just so everybody is aware, the elevator in town hall has been removed. That's currently under construction to bring it up to ADA standards. They've removed the entire shaft for the elevator, and they've rebuilt it in a new, larger style. And the elevator car has actually been on order. We're waiting to receive the car. I guess they can't order it until the actual shaft is built. So, they have to build the shaft and then put in the order for all of that. So, it takes a little while. So, we're waiting on that to get built. A couple of items that are not on my written report to all of you. First of all, grand total on our tax sale to date that we've been working on. So far, the collector of venue has brought in an additional $476,569.99. It's pretty impressive. And then lastly, I would like to take the opportunity to recognize that it's Public Service Recognition Week. This is a week that started in 1985. It's to recognize federal, state, and local employees who are in the public service sector and who do great work. And I just would like to recognize all our town staff, particularly, who are doing a great job and have gone above and beyond throughout this entire pandemic and even before that. They go above and beyond and do great work for all of us. So, thank you very much to all of them. And that's all I have to report, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Maniscalco. And I'm sure the council members would all second that motion that you just made to thank all the staff and the public work employees for all the work they've been doing during this pandemic. So, thank you. All right. Any questions for the town manager? Counselor Hockenberry?
Yes, I just wanted to thank the town manager and whoever the person is or building company that took down the walkway, because now we have an ADA ramp in front of the town hall. And I'm really happy to see that that project was finished. And I just want to say it looks really, really great. So, thank you very much for all that hard work. And I had used the vestibule today, and I'm really glad that it's still intact. I wanted to know if the American Care, that money that's coming in from the federal government for more of COVID, my last question would be, is do you, how are you on stock for masks and gloves and everything, like sanitation and cleaning and supplies? How are you on that?
Yeah, so far, we've been doing very, very well in terms of keeping stocks and supplies up. I think, you know, early on in the pandemic, we saw there was a real shortage. We actually had to send some staff pretty far north, almost northern New York, to pick up masks for staff. Thankfully, we haven't had to do that since. And we've been able to keep our stocks pretty well, our numbers pretty well up, at least. We did see a little bit of a drop in terms of staff use of masks at one point. We kind of surmise that might have been due to people bringing their own masks in, although we have seen that a little bit of an uptick in the last couple of weeks, just as we've talked about it some. So...
Thank you. And I was just, I did go by the Costco. Those trucks are like the size of buildings. It's kind of like men playing sandbox. It's kind of cool. I took pictures for my nephew. But thank you for all the hard work on that, too.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Hockenberry. Counselor Snyder?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mike, on the reopening, people will be able to come into the building and go to their offices in which they need to do business, correct?
So, people will be able to come in. They're going to be screened first for the standard COVID questions. They're also going to take their temperature. And then they're going to be directed to a waiting area where a staff person from the department where they have business will come to escort them to the department.
And how long do you see that process staying like that?
Right now, I'm not really too sure how long it's going to be. But the reason that we're putting that process in place is because the number of the departments, when you walk into them, there's a counter and very little room between where the counter is and the door. Maybe three people probably in a normal scenario might be able to fit in that. During COVID times, we've got to reduce that significantly. So, in order to kind of control that situation, this is the best we could come up with.
Okay. And are community groups able to book the rooms downstairs for meetings?
So, the rooms downstairs are going to be a little more difficult to book because we don't have ADA access to them at this point. So, people are going to have to understand that. Additionally, we're trying to limit public access to some of those rooms because we do have, we're going to have to probably increase our cleanings, which increase our costs to the town. So, if there is certain community functions that are related to town business, we certainly will try to accommodate them as best we can. But if it's just a random community group, we might ask them to try to do something different.
At another location?
Yes.
Another town building, I mean?
Yeah.
Okay. And on the elevator replacement project, so the door, the new door is on order. What's the approximate date that you think that, I know it's a ballpark figure, but when do you think it'll be done?
Yeah, I'm not 100% clear right now. I'll have to get back to you on that. It's actually the whole car that goes up and down is actually on order. And I guess they don't start construction on it until you actually finish that whole shaft and everything else they can get their appropriate measurements. I'm trying to see. I just got an update just a couple of minutes before the meeting started, if there's anything in here. I don't have anything in terms of a date of when that's going to arrive.
Okay.
I am expecting it to probably be August or fall sometime.
Okay. And one last question on the reopening. Will we have PPE, will we have masks available for people that come into the building in case they forgot it, or they want to wear a double mask or something like that?
Yeah. So, if somebody forgets their mask, we certainly will be able to provide them with one. Although, in order to make sure that we can maintain our stock supply and, you know, not spend an absolute fortune, we would prefer people to bring their own.
Right. But I guess my point is, if they don't, or if somebody forgets, or if somebody gets up there and left it in their car, we'll still have one available in case they need it.
Correct.
Okay. And that's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Snyder. Any other questions for the town manager? All right. If not, we'll go on to item seven, public input. And let me read this before we begin public input. When recognized by the mayor, speakers should give their name and address and avoid personalities or impugning of improper motives to any person at this meeting. The speaker shall limit their speaking time to five minutes. This limit may be exceeded, may not be exceeded, except when invoked by a member of the council with the consent of the majority of the council. Our clerk of the council, Ms. Reed, will set the timer for each speaker. And as a reminder, town council members will not respond to any public comments or questions at this time. All right. Thank you. Mr. Roberts, do we have any?
At this time, Mr. Mayor, we have no one asking to speak.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Mr. Maniscalco, any email comments?
I do have one email comment.
All right. Thank you.
This is from Stephanie Dexter, 15 Lurks, Berlin. My name is Stephanie Dexter, and I'm a member of the Planning and Zoning, as well as a member of the Affordable Housing Subcommittee. I support the waiver for competitive bidding for consulting services for the affordable housing plan required by law and due in July 2022. The consultant that Director of Planning, Michelle Leip, is talking to has a proven track record of quality work completed on budget and on time. They also know South Windsor well. When you consider that all 169 Connecticut towns are working to have an affordable plan ready to submit by July 2022, the availability of consulting services is slim. Please approve this waiver so we can move forward. Thanks, Stephanie Dexter.
All right. Thank you for that letter. Appreciate it. Any others, Mr. Maniscalco?
That's it.
That's it. Okay. And we will go on to item eight, adoption of the minutes. Counselor Snyder?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item eight, adoption of minutes of previous meetings. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby approves the minutes of the following town council meeting, special meeting minutes of April 12, 2021.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made and seconded. Any corrections or additions to the minutes? If not, we'll go on to voting. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? Okay.
Abstained.
Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Lydecker, right. So, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Reed?
Okay. Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Hockenberry?
Yes.
Counselor Snyder? Counselor Lydecker?
Abstained.
Counselor Manelli?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Pendleton?
Yes.
Counselor Kabowski?
Yes.
Counselor Evans?
Abstained.
Mayor Paterno?
Yes. All right.
Zero with two abstentions.
All right. Minutes have been approved. And our next set of minutes, Counselor Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby approves the minutes of the following town council meeting, regular meeting minutes of April 19, 2021.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made and seconded. Any changes, additions, corrections to these minutes? If not, we'll go on to voting. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Any abstentions? Deputy Mayor Pendleton?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Was that an abstention? I'm sorry.
No.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Minutes have been approved. We'll go on to item nine, communications from liaisons, officers, and boards directly responsible to the council. Any reports? Counselor Snyder?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have some information on planning and zoning. After April 20th meeting, they received and reviewed the Connecticut General Statutes 824 to review Pleasant Valley Elementary School, and that was approved. The PZC, Planning and Zoning Commission, sponsored a text amendment for electric vehicle charging supply equipment zoning text amendment, which means they're going to require new companies coming in at a certain size or expansions of a certain size. You have to put in a percentage of electronic charging units. And that was approved. On steam manufacturing, they requested a site plan for a 5,400-square-foot addition on their property located at 187 Satellite Road, and that was approved. There was another application for a special exception to Table 411A for the sale of new and used cars on property located on 1505 Sullivan, I mean, John Fitch Boulevard. I don't have a response on that, so they may have continued that one. And then Jessica Waterhouse requested a special exception to create an animal sanctuary to be known as Mizzoulu Animal Sanctuary. And that's at 215 Main Street in South Windsor, and that was approved. And then there was another one, a request from Monique Delmage. She's doing business as Precisely Pandas, and it's a request to operate a daycare on property located at 1033 John Fitch Boulevard. That's the old bank, the old on Route 5 there, the old Bank of America.
Right.
And she's planning to open a daycare facility there. She has one now, I believe, in Manchester. And she's just expanding. So, that was nice. And that was approved as well. After April 27th meeting, the town of South Windsor requested a two-year temporary conditional permit to operate the farmer's market from May 22 to September 25 this year. And it's going to be moved, it's going to be on property at 220 Nevers Road. So, most people see it now in front of the Bollworth Playground or in that area, right across from the high school. But it's actually being moved further north. I think it's north. And it's going to be at 220 Nevers Road. It's a bigger site. There'll be plenty of parking and gravel road coming in. And there's lots of room for additional vendors. And this year, as far as I know, the town, John Caldwell's group and Molly Keyes Park and Rec are taking over the farmer's market, and they will be running that. They have a lot of things planned on that. And then there was another request from REESG NewCo South Windsor. They're looking for a zoning change, and that's on Sullivan Avenue Mixed Use. And that's for the Geisler's Plaza. They're looking to 125 apartment units over there, kind of where Hot Leather is. That building will be taken down. And that, they brought in, the renovation of Geisler's, it'll be 60,740 square feet. They'll be redoing that entire plaza, and of course, paving and things like that. That was continued. The planning and zoning did not finish that. They continued that forward onto their May 7 meeting. On the South Windsor, let's see, the farmer's market, they approved that. And that's about it for now.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Snyder. I'm glad you cleared it up, because after you talked about the animal sanctuary, and then you mentioned precisely pandas, I was thinking something else was going on. So, thank you.
Yeah. So, it's another daycare facility, which is exciting. It's a young woman who's bringing it forward.
We need that, yeah. Thank you.
We do. Thanks.
Okay. Any other reports? Counselor Evans?
Thank you. I attended the Virtual Inland Wetlands Agency Conservation Commission meeting on Wednesday, April 21. They held a public hearing, or they opened the public hearing for the application from the town of South Windsor for Pleasant Valley Elementary School, 591 Ellington Road. And they're leaving that public hearing open until next meeting on May 5, next regular meeting, May 5. They then went on to discuss the application of that same location and property, and talked about the different wetlands, and also how they would mitigate the soil, different type of soils that were there overall. And one of the things that I found exciting is they talked about the potential for an outdoor classroom that could be developed in some of the areas at Pleasant Valley. And also, you'd be happy to know, Mr. Mayor, they discussed the barn on-site that you had mentioned, and what potential existed for that to either be repurposed in another way, or to be moved off-site and used by someone else. They also received an application from the Promenade Shops at Evergreen Walk, 801 Evergreen Way, that they're going to be discussing at the next meeting on May 5, which will be to discuss the access road, which will have to be redeveloped because of the change in the grocery store planning for that area.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Evans. Any other reports? All right. Well, hearing none, we'll go on to item 10, reports from town committees.
Quickly, Karen.
Oh, Counselor Lydecker, did I miss your hand? I'm sorry.
You did. That's okay.
I'm sorry.
No, no worries. I just wanted to talk briefly. I attended the Board of Ed meeting at the last Tuesday of April. They started off introducing a young woman who actually founded the ladies golf program over at the high school. And what an amazing young woman she was. She had to raise funding for it herself for the first three years to see if it was sustainable. And then the board took over the funding, and that program is just thriving. The principal from Pleasant Valley brought in one of her teachers, Ms. O'Connor. She's a fourth-grade teacher at Pleasant Valley who teaches math. She talked about the new way that they are teaching kids math. It's more of a literal math program. So, instead of what we're used to, four plus four equals eight, it's much more, you know, Joey comes in with four of his donuts, and then Suzie brings in four of hers. And how many do they have in the class? So, they're doing it more in discussion formats. And the kids are really expanding off of this and discussing and talking and really figuring out how to think math through instead of just memorizing problems. And then the big discussion of the night, too, was their Equity Council. So, I'm just going to switch over to my notes. The Equity Council is co-chaired by Mario Flores and Candace Irwin. This is the end of the inaugural year for it. The purpose of the Equity Council is to maintain culture and climate that ensures welcoming and culturally sustainable schools, recruit and retain BIPOC staff, use Equity Lens to guide policies, protocols, and practices, promote authentic youth voice and agency, attain sustainable professional practices grounded in equity and inclusivity through empathy, dignity, respect, love, and cultural proficiency. Parents wanted honest talk and honest change, and that's really been the motto of this Equity Council. They are serving as an advocating body, and each student has access to high-quality, rigorous educational experiences. The core committee itself is made up of 45 members. That does include administrators, teachers, non-certified staff, current students, alumni, parents, and community members. And then they had a whole host of speakers, of members who are in this committee. And it really, it's a very powerful, I think it was about an hour almost, it was a very powerful period of the meeting. One woman talked about how she was African-American. One of her daughters had felt, you know, a lot of racism in the schools and transferred out before high school. And now her young, her other daughter is coming through. And she really could see the change that's being done in the schools and at this school administrative level. And she really just praised the Board of Ed for their commitment to diversity and really having these very difficult conversations, changing their policies. Some teachers talked about how they can now talk about Ramadan in class and explain about fasting because they're finding that they're much more supported in their schools to really expand into their cultures with the children. The principal from Pleasant Valley, she's a member of the committee, and she also talked about how she would have been at three different recruitment fairs. And people are clamoring to come work here in South Windsor because all the hard work that they're doing to really make our school hiring more diverse is really getting noticed outside of South Windsor, and people are really excited about this. So, I would just say, if you have the chance, just go and just listen to that small period of the meeting. It was so powerful to just hear people talk about their experiences in our schools, both positive and negative, and just really how hard the board is really working to change their website, to change their policies, to change their practices, to really bring in a more diverse and supportive environment in the schools. And it was really moving to hear. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Wow. Thank you, Counselor Lydecker. Sounds like a great report by the Equity Council. Thanks. All right. Anyone else for committee reports? Other committees, we'll go on to item 11. We have no consent agenda. So, we'll go on to item 12, the unfinished business. And the first one is the creation of a social justice and racial equity commission through an ordinance that's been proposed. I'm going to ask Counselor Evans to begin this discussion.
Thank you. So, you all, each council received in your email a copy of the now-updated version of what the ordinance may look like. I believe it's also supposed to be mine. So, the biggest things we discussed last meeting was the makeup, the change that we had discussed versus to change it to. And if you don't mind, I'm going to read this whole section of the first paragraph, as well as the terms, which are a little different as well. So, it says, "The commission will consist of two members, who shall be Republicans, two members, who shall be Democrats, two members, who are not affiliated with the Republican Party, but appointed by the Republican Party, two members, who are not affiliated with the Democratic Party, but appointed by the Democratic Party." That's the makeup. So, it's two of each. The next sentence is, "At its establishment, commissioners will hold variant term lengths with four commissioners' terms: one Republican, one Democrat, one member who is not affiliated with the Republican Party but appointed by the Republican Party, and one member who is not affiliated with the Democratic Party but appointed by the Democratic Party, to expire at two years and four commissioners' terms." That same phrase, one Republican, one Democrat, one member who is not affiliated with the Republican Party but appointed by the Republican Party, and one member who is not affiliated with the Democratic Party but appointed by the Democratic Party, to expire at one year. Thereafter, each commissioner's term will be set for a term of two years. So, the thought with that is that we would have two sets, each turning over each year. But the first year, one set would be set for one year, and the other set would be set for two... and the other set would be set for two years. Um and then it would kind of be determined, you know, between, I guess, the parties who were appointing us how that would be determined, of the two years, the one years. Um so I wasn't sure if there was any further comment on that piece before I go on to others. Councilor Neely?
I do.
Yes, Councilor Neely.
Okay, I said, I just saw clarification, I think it's a great idea that you're staggering it. My my question is, when you talk about two Republicans, you are, you know how we, we had four um town council members on the, on the, on the pre um commission? You're not talking about having four councils, can you just make that more clear? Like, I don't know if we have to add that or make a friendly amendment to it, but make it clear that um it's not gonna be like you, me, Erica, I mean, you, me, Leidecker, and Snyder, you know what I'm saying? Like, it's, it's not town council Republicans, it's Republican town committee members who are not us.
Well, isn't that typically, isn't that typically how it's made up? And then I just, in the liaisons, it does say we would have like a town council liaison. So I'm not sure, is that repetitive, is that typically, I mean, I'm not, what wording would be used, I'm not sure. So I'm I'm not saying that too, I'm just clarifying.
Yeah, I I'm not, I'm not, Chris, I just want to make it perfectly clear that you're not looking for the same four people. Well, commission, you know, you're gonna with that um, the committee, the committee, the committee, it's beyond the commission. It's it's not continuation, it's something totally separate, something brand new, and each party is going to be picking um two, and then one o- one other person, two and then one other person. I I just, I don't know where that has to be, or even if it has to be, but I just want to make it clear that it's not our committee members, and then adding two more people who are not, you know, on the committee, I don't know.
Right, thank you, Councilor Neely, Deputy Mayor Pelletson?
I believe the town attorney is here, so we can ask her questions about this if we need to. And maybe we need to do another paragraph that states what the members consist of or not consist of, which is non-members of the, you know, not members of the council or whatever.
Or elected officials, or even elected officials.
Say, non-elected Republican, non-elected.
That's, that's what I'm looking for, you know, just, just so that, so they're not assuming that that's going to be us. Not that that we want it, it's just that, you know, we did it before, now they're, now we're moving on to somebody else.
All right, thank you, Councilor Neely, Attorney, yes. Attorney Olson, yeah.
I was trying to get in, but it it wouldn't let me.
Oh, all right, well, will that cover, will that cover our concern if we say non-elected official?
You could say a non-elected official or a non-council member.
Yeah.
Either one works.
Okay.
Well, if you go with, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, Mayor?
No, go ahead, Deputy Mayor Pelletson, yes.
If you go with non-elected official, that also includes any elected position, being the planning and zoning, and also the um Board of Education. So you need to clarify if you wanna state non-elected official, or if you wanted to stick with council. I'm not sure.
I, Chris, I, that is obviously a decision of the council as to whether you wanna foreclose somebody who sits on any other board or commission as an elected official.
Right.
Any of your um commission and board members are appointed. So uh stating that it's, it's a, it's a non-elected official might not cover the gamut. But um again, that is your decision.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Olson, Councilor Evans?
So in the first line, if we're gonna add this, I would like to add it in the first line, it's, it reads, "A social justice and racial equity commission is hereby established consisting of an eight-member panel of community members." So could we say non-elected community members? And and we do have, in our liaisons, we do have a Board of Ed liaison. So I think we could say not, non-elected, because we already have a Board of Ed liaison, so we wouldn't want a Board of Ed member. So if we said in the first line, member, non-elected.
Councilor Evans, I think that covers it, if you say right in that first line, non-elected community members, that covers it. Councilor Neely, you agree?
Yes, yeah, I was just looking for clarification, just so it's not assumed that, you know, a score will be back on.
It's a good point, because we don't want anyone to make that assumption, this is a separate commission being created, right? All right, thank you both, and thank you, Attorney Olson, Councilor Evans, any other, yes, you have more comments?
I have more. Um so one of the issues brought up last meeting was the concern that we make sure that we would have to have five votes for um anything to pass. Um I had put that in, and then when, when Debbie and I were reviewing it, because it does say that we'll follow Robert's rules um in our organization, that would cover that. So we didn't add it in because it was repetitive, so so it would already require those five votes.
Okay, thank you.
I'm also wondering that, I'm just noticing now under liaisons, that it's, it's in bold about the Chamber of Commerce, I think that's just a, just needs to be unbolded because it was part of the editing process.
Oh, right, yes.
So I don't know if there's any questions about those, before I go on to the last one, which is probably the biggest continuing issue. All right, so this, the last one is duties, um A, which is to work with town staff to ensure effective anti-racist and anti-bias training is implemented for every town employee and elected official on an annual basis of twelve hours minimum. So in a lot of discussion, you know, I I know, I can, if the town manager wants to report your conversation, I think we're kind of, we could go ahead with that statement if we wanted to.
Yeah, so I did talk with, I did talk with uh Mrs. Perry about the idea of all our collective bargaining units and the impact of potentially doing twelve hours of training. Um and then she reminded me, you know, we, as the employer, we get to say what work you do. They get to say, you know, um the the conditions sometimes that the the work occurs under, and then uh we have to negotiate about the um reimbursement for that work or salary for that work. So um I think we'd be fine if you did up to twelve hours, I just, as um, you know, I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't say that, you know, twelve hours is more than a full workday worth of work for all our employees, would definitely um impact uh our ability to get some things done sometimes. But um, you know, it could be up to twelve hours.
So if I can continue, just to mention my thought after conversations based on this, if if there, we might consider, I know different people have different thoughts on this, but if we might consider changing it to work with town staff to ensure effective anti-racist and anti-bias training is implemented for every town employee and elected official on an annual basis with the goal of twelve hours minimum. And the idea being that we're setting this goal for the commission, we're setting this goal for the town, it's not required. But under F, we do have to report annually, so we set the goal and we see where we meet, and then it's up to the commission to determine to where to go from that. So that, that's the goal piece versus the actual um requirement of the twelve hours.
All right, we'll go to some questions, Councilor Hockenberry.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mayor, I appreciate that. Um I, exactly what you just said, but uh uh Councilor Evans, uh as an annual up to twelve hours um within the contractual or how, whatever that statement you had said, Mike, about, I'm sorry, town manager, about um, isn't, isn't there guidelines within the contractual or like the union uh employees and the regular employees? Don't they have guidelines to um that are negotiated about that, or is that a negotiated part?
Yes, so I mean, you're not gonna be able to, we're not gonna be able to say to the um employees, you know, go home and get on your computer and take this training at night, you know, in off-hours without having to either pay them overtime or assign this as a training to be done during working, working hours. So I mean, that's, that's really the, that's, that's how we're gonna be outlined for this whole thing. You know, there's not, beyond that, we could certainly tell them that you're gonna have to do twelve hours of training throughout the year on this topic.
Within the guidelines of a contract, or?
Yeah, so within that guidelines of they're gonna have to do it during their working hours, probably, is the most.
So this, this counselor, that's what I, I'd like to clarify, thank you, and I see that Attorney Olson was like jumping up out of her chair. Thank you, Mayor.
Attorney Olson, you have a clarification for us?
So, so I have to support Councilor Evans' suggestion as a modification to that. And the reason I say that is, I believe that there is a lot of training that can impart uh wisdom regarding racial bias that may not be quote-unquote racial bias training. So for example, you are already required to do sexual harassment training.
That's right.
A, a part of that, obviously, uh is also going to impact the treatment of individuals that are different from yourself. Um you will probably also already have uh requirements to do training on um diversity, right? So that arguably, as part of what's already required, could factor into the overall hour requirements. So, again, if you modify this so that it's up to twelve hours, and you clarify or accept advisory opinions on what could be included in the realm of training, you might find that there's a great deal of overlap, and I think ultimately you will reach your goal. But that's, that's just my suggestion.
All right, thank you, Attorney Olson, Councilor Neely?
Yeah, I was, I was gonna say something very similar to that, because, you know, a- as an educator, we we get training beginning of the school year, um or we get um, you know, professional development throughout the, the school year, and it's only a couple hours, and I know we can't, you know, make somebody go home and and take a course online. There are stuff that's already embedded, like, um we have to teach, you know, like um, like character ed kind of thing. So, so we had to like, you know, you know, prepare, as you prepare that lesson, that kind of counts towards your hours. But the, the word I have an issue with, like, every employee, because if you say every employee, then somehow you have to, um employee would have to be, if you were going to evaluate, make sure that they hit that. We just get, just say that you're offering it, but like, when you said, when it says every employee must get up to like twelve hours, like, you know, suppose you're, you know, I don't know, suppose you're absent like a day where that, that, that thing was given, that that doesn't mean that you have to make that up, because if you're absent, you shouldn't have to make something up, you know, outside of work. So if you, I think if you get rid of the word every, as long as it's offered, and as long as, you know, you've, you've done your due diligence to make sure that it's, it's offered to every, every employee. Um I don't know if you have to make an accountability, every employee, you know, checks it off, yes, I did this, yes, I did my one hour this month, one hour that next month, um is, is that something that we could work in there?
All right, thank you, Councilor Neely, we're, we're gonna come back to, I wanna get a few more comments, then we'll, we'll keep that in mind. I think it's a, a point that we need to discuss, Councilor Snyder?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um I would agree to do the up to twelve hours. When you say every employee, um don't forget, there's a lot of seasonal employees. So are we talking about, I mean, we have kids come in for the fourth hour, people come in for the fourth hour, we have people in the summer camps, so do we wanna say every FTE, every full-time equivalent? Um or I think maybe Carrie can help with that, I just, I mean, I don't know, if we have kid, if we have people working just maybe eight weeks in the summer, or six weeks in the summer, I mean, are we gonna make them have twelve hours of training? So I just wanna be sure that we're categorizing our full-time employees, or our, our permanent employees. Um, you know, people that come and go based on the fourth hour and other recreation part. I mean, we have lifeguards that work at the pool for like two months. So, you know, they're, they're, they work full, they work during the day, but, you know, they may not necessarily have the time. I mean, you can't take lifeguards off their benches and have them sit through eight, twelve hours of training in the short period of time that they're there, so, I don't know, maybe we can um somehow accommodate that, that wording um to have it be like non-seasonal employees or just full-time, something like that, and whatever you come up with is fine. Um and as far as including, you know, when we look at the town, the town is required by state law and federal law, under those laws and and governing rules, to give a certain amount of training anyway. So um and and Carrie and and Councilor Neely pointed it out, I mean, people, I mean, I worked for the state, we used to have a minimum of like twenty, twenty-four hours of different types of training, and many of it was sensitivity, diversity, um all those kind of things, so, which were wonderful, they were great to do. But you took them on your own, yet there would be, there would be a day, you know, four hours a day that I wasn't doing my job because, you know, I was doing that. So um, you know, so when the town sets up classes, I think it's our town manager's responsibility to ensure that our employees are appropriately trained in accordance with state and federal guidelines um in all of those areas. So, you know, we're gonna say they have to have that training, and then they have to have twelve more hours of training. So um, and and that's kind of a delicate type of a thing to to manage. It's, it's a logistically a nightmare to keep track of everybody and what training they had, but that's what our um town manager has to do. So um I just, you know, I just don't think, I, I think it's important, I think we need, all employees have to have this. But I would definitely, just to recap, make sure that we classify employees that are full-time, um unless any other reason why we wouldn't. And um, and the fact that other training that they have based on town requirements, I mean, a, a commission shouldn't be dictating the, the way the town manager and the assistant town managers apply training. So I think it's gonna be important with communication between the town and this new commission as to what type of training they're offering, maybe they, maybe the town modifies it a little bit to include a little bit different type of things that they're already getting. So um, I uh, I just think it's, I just think we need to be sure we consider the full-time employees and up to twelve hours, thanks, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Councilor Snyder, Councilor Hockenberry?
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate that, and thank you, uh Councilor Snyder, for uh mentioning the up to hours. Um and this is, this question I have is um for Attorney Olson, um through you, Mayor. Um if we have a part-time employee that um doesn't have the training, but an incident happens that is harmful through bias or um race, uh race, racism, um what happens legally to the town? Like, could a suit happen, or whatever, I want, I'd like to also think about that. So what would be your answer on that?
So, thank you, um Mr. Mayor, through you.
Yes, go ahead, Attorney Olson.
Thank you. So I, so first thing I would like to say is I would echo Councilor Neely's suggestion that you have an ordinance that offers every town employee up to the equivalent of twelve hours of, of training uh on diversity. And that way, you can capture, you know, the snippets of time that are spent in all of the other regular training programs that really do address diversity. Like I said, sexual harassment, or, you know, sensitivity, or all of that. Um but the question about what your liability could be, um you should know that agents of the town, again, uh depending on how they, they act, if they act as an agent of the town, um and they do something that is grossly inappropriate, um could subject the town to liability. Uh but there's also those circumstances where somebody acts outside of their authority, and having the ordinance that said, we are going to accept people of diverse backgrounds, we are going to train people to accept people of diverse backgrounds, um that um there is some shielding, there is some sovereign immunity. So it would all be dependent upon the specific circumstances. I would also point out, however, the ordinance as currently written requires twelve hours for each of you. Um and I know all of you work full-time, probably, outside, maybe, maybe not, but um I'm assuming that your position as a town councilor is not your primary um uh, you know, uh mode of employment, and that this twelve hours would be on top of all of your obligations as a town councilor on everything that you currently are required to do, um as well as whatever your full-time employment uh obligates you to. And and Councilor Snyder's points about people who are part-time, who work only during the summer months, twelve hours, um that's a significant time commitment. And I said again, that, you know, if you, if you set up a program, based on the advice of this committee, where every incoming employee, whether elected or otherwise, has to at least do some preliminary training regarding diversity and sensitivity, maybe an hour or two? Maybe it's a requirement of, you know, accepting the job. It would go a long way to addressing Counselor Snyder's concerns, Counselor Hockenberry's concerns, Counselor Evans' concerns. But again, to require the 12 hours right off the gate without making those distinctions, I think is gonna be problematic and very, very difficult to manage.
Can, and through you, Mayor, can I have one more question to the, um, the attorney? Thank you very much. Through you, Attorney Olson. So if the wording was maybe five hours up to 12 hours, or like a smaller number up to, because you're, you're, or, because what, what would you consider, like, if I only had one hour, right, of this training, and possibly three of the trainings is really specific to like sensitivity, or what have you, you know, how do you determine that as being? And, and I, and I didn't even know why 12 hours was chosen. Like, is there a specific training that equals the 12 hours? You know, and I don't know that answer. So how do you determine what's enough if it's up to? So that was my question.
All right. Thank you Counselor Hockenberry. Attorney Olson.
Yeah. So to respond to that, um, I think that the 12 hours was driven out of your fervent desire to show everybody that you are taking this extremely seriously, as you should, right? Every community should be taking this very seriously. That, uh, that anybody who is in a public official position appreciates the, um, concerns about treating people regardless of race, or creed, or color, uh, on an equal footing. But, but again, the practicalities of implementing that, especially from a commission that is to my rather advisory, suggests to me that the way to do this is to have the commission recommend what would constitute up to 12 hours of appropriate training on diversity. Whether it's a part of your sexual harassment training, whether it's a separate program for anybody who accepts a job at South Windsor, they understand that before, you know, they walk through the door and sit at their desk, they're gonna have, you know, a couple of hours of precise, you know, diversity training, whatever it is. The ordinance to my mind, if they say, we're gonna recommend up to 12 hours of what's gonna constitute appropriate diversity training, then you have the ability, with respect to your job descriptions, to set forth what the requirements of that position are gonna be. And, um, and again, I don't think there's anything wrong with expecting that anybody who walks through South Windsor's doors and takes a job with South Windsor, doesn't understand as part of their training, because they all have training, right? When they start, they all have to sit down and go through, whether it's IT or whatever it is. Why not have, you know, a couple of hours of diversity training be a requirement? Maybe it's an hour of diversity and an hour of sexual harassment, which kind of runs the gamut. Um, ultimately, the decision is up to all of you. But, um, I see no issue with that. Even if they're a summer employee, making them take an hour-long course of tolerance training and diversity training, totally appropriate. And, and I commend you all for doing it so seriously. But I, I do think that the ordinance itself needs to be fluid. The minute you put a, a absolute on anything, you're gonna start running into trouble. As, as Counselor Snyder pointed out, you know, you've got full-time employees, you've got part-time, you've got seasonal. So, I would recommend, um, as a counselor, I think it was, excuse me, Neely said, uh, that anti-bias training is offered for every town employee.
Thank you for that explanation. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you Attorney Olson. Thank you Counselor Hockenberry. So let me recap three things that I'm hearing, and maybe Counselor Evans can come back to us at the next meeting with the resolution.
Sorry, excuse me.
Can I recap, and then I'll turn it back to you, Counselor Evans?
Can I, can I throw out what I've put together potentially based on what we've talked about right now?
Yes, sure, sure.
I think I'd like to move along with this as a resolution for our next meeting, I'm hoping. So I think that if we put in, I'm like really white it out here, work with town staff to ensure effective anti-racist and anti-bias training is offered for every town employee and elected official on an annual basis of two hours minimum, with the goal of 12 hours. So it's setting the minimum, but it also has a goal.
All right.
It's all employees, and that way, it still includes the summer employees. Would we be able to, is two hours too much to expect our summertime employees to do?
All right. Thank you, Counselor Evans.
I started doing a really wordy one at the bottom, but I thought that might solve all the, the questions, issues by, by having offered a low, a low required and a high goal.
Yeah, and I just want to remind you that Counselor Evans pointed out that in item F in this commission's listing of duties, it's a report annually to the town council about how close to this goal we have come. So it's got, it's gotta be fluid, as Attorney Olson pointed out. And I think that gives us the, the kind of check and balance to say, okay, look, we said between two and 12, you've only done one hour all year for most of these employees, so we need to improve. That, I think that's the kind of feedback that is gonna be valuable between this kind of commission and our town staff and our HR department. They're gonna be doing the training. Okay, thank you.
Offered. I just want to mention.
And offered. And offered will be, yes. All right, Counselor Neely, another comment.
I just want to, I, I just was wondering why we're saying a minimum also. Because like, again, if you have like, you know, a 17-year-old, I mean, he already has, I, unless you're counting, you know, his, you know, his safety, and, you know, you know, if he's a lifeguard, his, like, part of his safety training before he's, he, you know, sits on, on, on the bench, maybe he has, that that's included, but that's two hours extra. Are you gonna pay him for those two hours? Because those seasonal employees are, are paid hourly. So are you, are you, are we willing to pay those seasonal employees for the two-hour training? I don't understand the, the purpose of the minimum. I theoretically understand it, but I understand, when, when we say all of our employees, by putting that minimum, then we're gonna be paying them, and, and minimum wage is going up. So every employee, we're gonna pay $30 so they can sit and listen to a training before they're employed. Is that, is, so we're, just so we're understanding, once you set the rule, you know, but, but saying up to 12, and we could just, you know, and what we reported, say, okay, the, some lifeguards did it, some didn't, and, and that, that's all we really need to know. Because they're really not going to be, I mean, that cannot save somebody based on race. I mean, they're, they're, you know, they're, that's part of their training. But are you, are we requiring them to sit through two hours of training at $15 an hour? Every, every, every single person. It's just something to think about. I mean, I, I, I think, you know, you know, it's, if it's supposed to be fluid, then I think up to 12, you know, they can understand that it's offered, it's not, I just don't understand the purpose of minimum. And when you put a minimum there, and maybe some people may be interested in that minimum, and they want that $30, just so all they have to do is sit and listen to somebody rant and rave, you know, about, um, a, a social justice or, um, a equity type topic, you know? I don't know how seriously they, they will take it unless there's some sort of accountability at the end of those two hours. You know, do they have to submit something that they, that they attended it? I mean, it's gonna become a logistical nightmare even by having the minimum of two hours each time. That's, that's all. But thank you.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Neely. Counselor Lidecker.
So with all due respect, I think it's a little bit more than ranting and raving in these training sessions. So that's a little inappropriate. But these are also, you, you say that there are employees who are making $15 an hour, and they're seasonal employees and they're part-time. These are employees around our kids. These are employees at the fourth R, at the camps, at parks and rec, who are going to be dealing with our impressionable children. So yeah, I think it's important for them to have these types of trainings. These are also people who are going to be at the pool, who deal with not only our community, but all the other surrounding communities, and people of all walks of life. So these are some of the employees who are meeting with many more people than some of the other town employees dealing with just our town, which we know has a low diversity population. So in my estimation, I'm more than happy to pay $30 for our seasonal employees dealing with our children and all walks of life, listening to people ranting and raving in a training, because I think that would be very beneficial for them to hear that information. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Lidecker. Counselor Neely, yes, Counselor Neely.
Um, by, by ranting and raving, I have attended some, some, um, virtual trainings where you just sit and you listen to somebody, just view what they think about racially diverse, um, topics and stuff like that. Sometimes, you know, as, as, as a high schooler, they may, they may consider it, just like saying and listening to somebody, just talk at them. Because you're not, you're not, you're not deciding what kind of professional development you're giving these people. You're just saying they have to attend some, and if they go online and they see one, and will, will that count? And some of the ones that are online, and you can, you can go, it's just somebody ranting and raving. And that's what I meant by, uh, like, what are we, what are we counting as, as professional development? Are we counting as, you know, they're going to be, you're sitting in a, in a classroom situation or a Zoom situation, and they're going to be given, um, a, a professional, or they just have to listen to anything? And there are some really bad professional developments out there. And if, if we're not, if we're gonna be specific, that's one thing, but for now, we're just saying, you have to, you have to have two hours of, of social, um, justice information. There are, there are some that are ranting and raving. I had, I, I fully understand that people who are dealing with our children especially need to be, you know, have the utmost attendance to that. And that's not what I was, that's not what I was talking about. But I have been in trainings that have been virtual, that have just been somebody talking at me, and I'll tell you what, it, it, it's not effective. And that's what, that's, that's what I was talking about. So if you're talking about quality two hours ahead of time, then I have no idea. And I, and you, I have no problem paying somebody to attend a professional development, but is there gonna be some sort of accountability for how we're spending our money? I'm just looking at that part. And I'm just looking at, are, are those students who are, are lifeguarding, working the fourth R, are they willing and able to attend a two-hour session? I, that, you know, that was just, I'm, I'm a task in my opinion. And, you know, if, if, if it came across poorly, I'm sorry, but what I meant was, there are things online that, that will count, that could count as social justice, and just listening to somebody talk. And if we're gonna have a minimum, then there should, needs to be some sort of accountability. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Neely. And, and I'd like to clear something up here before we move on. I think we need Mr. Maniscalco's guidance a little bit. But this, this commission is not conducting any racial bias or racism workshops. This is gonna be handled through our human resources department. They are going to evaluate whatever programs they want to present to employees. Mr. Maniscalco, is that a fair statement?
Yeah, so I think, you know, my understanding of the way this is worded is that the, the commission is going to do some evaluation of the trainings, and if they identify one that's of value, they're gonna be recommending and working with the town staff to say, yeah, this sounds like a good one. It should be spread out and implemented amongst the, the town employees.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Maniscalco. And Attorney Olson, a clarification, then we'll go to Counselor Snyder.
I was just gonna suggest, um, I think to Counselor Neely's point where she was challenging the minimum versus, um, you know, requirements, it seems to me, why have a maximum? It seems to me that, um, what you might want to focus on is requiring a minimum that's doable, based on recommendations from this new commission, and skip the maximum. I mean, why, why do you need a maximum if you've agreed upon a minimum? And maybe that minimum is two hours, maybe it's three. But if you, if you again, take the advice of this commission as to specific programs that offer effective anti-racist and anti-bias training, and you accept their advisory opinion, um, you could mandate that all employees, whether they're seasonal, full-time, or otherwise, have a specific amount of that training. But I don't know why you would say that there's a maximum of 12 hours. That's just my suggestion. I throw that out there for your consideration.
All right. Thank you, Attorney Olson. Counselor Snyder.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I, you know, to Counselor Lidecker's comments, I would never, I mean, I would never not want our seasonal or part-time people to be trained as well. And I, I'm happy that we're thinking about getting rid of the 12 hours, because you can't put, I don't think it's right to put these seasonal or these, these, um, different types of part-time workers through a 12-hour training. But they, an hour may be good, or an hour, two hours may be good, based on what they're working with and what they're doing. So I absolutely agree that all, all of our employees do have to be trained. But if we go with a minimum of two hours, or just say, you know, up to 12 hours, that, that training can almost be dictated in-house and by this commission to say, well, let's do all your seasonal employees two hours. And let's do, um, all of our full-time employees for six hours or five hours. I, I do, I would rather see it very open. That way, the commission and the council and the, um, the administration can discuss what's the best amount of training based on, um, you know, the jobs that people hold. Some people that are, that are in the public may need more training, you know, based on what their job, your jobs are, their interaction with the public. Others who don't deal with the public at all may only need to have four hours of training. Or, you know, so I think we need to allow it to be, and I agree with, with Attorney Olson, is that we do need to let it, allow it to be flexible so that the commission and our HR department can figure out the best level of training for each different type of employee. So, um, and I kind of agree, Carrie, about not putting it up to, not having a maximum, but just definitely doing the minimum. And we want to make sure the minimum is doable. You know, I think two hours of training is, a min, as a minimum, might fit well with a lot of our employees, and others may need a lot more than that. Leaving it open for the commission and the administration and the town to figure out which is best. I, I kind of like that. I like it to be a little bit more flexible and open-ended. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Snyder. Counselor Evans.
Thank you. I just want to say that I'm really glad that we, as elected officials, will also be able to have this training, because I think that, um, we will definitely benefit from that. Um, and I think that the commission really will be effective in helping to make sure to address those concerns of the quality of these offerings. Also, the seasonal, I mean, what Counselor Lidecker, I can't say better than she did, that I think it's just as important that we have our seasonal employees, our non-full-time employees have this training, because they are representing our town when they are in those positions, and, and they should be held to the same accountability in regard to that. I also just want to point out, we're going from a very high standard, um, which just got lowered, you know, or changed in such a way that we really did lower, um, our expectations. Um, and that high original standard was passed on a three, four, three, four on our subcommittee. And we also unanimously approved it on our statement of support when it was brought forward to the council. So the way that it was written was unanimously approved, um, through that statement of support. Not to say that we can't edit it. So just to, to clarify, also, the 12 hours, um, is a goal. So it's not to say it's a maximum, it would be a goal. So like, in my, I could see it, if this report were to come every year, you could have a bar graph, and you could have your two-hour line, you could have your 12-hour line, and you could see where each employee or department met goal and, or, sorry, minimum and goal. So it's not that we're saying, stop, when you hit 12 hours. It's, we would like to see you get as close to 12 hours as possible. But we want, we're requiring, asking for two hours minimum.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Evans. Any other comments? Do you think you have enough information to come back with the revised format for resolution?
So I just asked, based on what I shared before, I mean, I kind of took the what was being asked, and I put that in by changing it to offered. I'm not sure that there aren't things that were asked for before that aren't here. So I'm not sure what else, um, is being asked for to change in here. Um, you know, I think that what is being here was specifically changed from implemented to offered to, um, a two-hour minimum rather than a twelve-hour minimum. Um, so I think the, I'm not really sure how much more it could be changed based on work with town staff to ensure effective anti-racist and anti-bias training is offered for every town employee and elected official on an annual basis of two hours minimum with a goal of twelve hours annually. So that, that is what I said before, that was based on all the recommendations, um, that everyone said. And I think that I'm not really sure what I'm missing from what people are saying, because that addresses everything, in my opinion.
Okay, I, I think we're all on that same page, if I'm, if I'm correct in, in, uh, kind of putting together what, all the comments are. And I'll, I think we've covered everybody's comments, if you make those changes. All right?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. So you'll do the revision and come back with the resolution for the next meeting. All right, thank you, Counselor Evans. And Deputy Mayor Pendleton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the process of getting this ordinance passed needs a public hearing. So we want to set that public hearing up with the revised resolution for the next meeting.
Uh, I think we'd have to do it at the next meeting for the following meeting. Right? Okay.
Yep.
So at the May seven-
The council wants to say something.
Yes, Ms. Reed?
No, you're good? Okay.
Well, it's just at the May seventeenth meeting, there'll be a resolution to set the public hearing for the following meeting.
Right. And then the, so that means the first meeting in June will be the actual resolution for this commission. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, just as a, a follow-up to that, I think it's important that the, um, when you guys do set your public hearing, that you have your final ordinance. Like, it's not going to be modified any further or any of that, just so everybody's aware.
Okay.
And-
Yes.
And it would be-
Agreed.
Public hearing would be set on the seventeenth to the first meeting in June, and then usually we take a resolution the following meeting.
Right, okay.
Okay.
Yes. All right, any other comments? Counselor Evans?
I was just going to say, if I remember correctly, that might actually be perfect timing, because I do believe that was around when we, um, created our subcommittee. So it would be a perfect-
That's right, that's right, okay. You're right. All right, thank you. Uh, we'll move on to the next item then, if there are no other comments. Item twelve B, our discussion of the memorial to honor residents who've been impacted by COVID-19. Counselor Evans?
Thank you, yes. I just wanted to share, um, and perhaps, Mr. Mayor, you have more information on this, that we've been reaching out to businesses in town that may, uh, be willing to contribute to this memorial. So we're trying to find some funds so that the cost of the memorial can be not from town funds or not all from town funds. Um, and we also have Mr. Caldwell here as well, because I know that there were some concerns expressed previously about the location of the memorial and other concerns that have come up since then about, about that as well. So I wasn't sure if anyone wanted to-
All right, thank you. Yeah, thank you, Counselor Evans. I would just add that two, um, two local companies have contacted me about possibly making a donation to this memorial. So it's not definite yet, and they've asked me not to share their names until they decide. But, uh, that could be a big help, I think, in terms of the dollars involved. All right, and Mr. Caldwell? I, I think the other concern that Counselor Evans is, uh, talking about is something that came up at our last meeting, which is the location of the memorial in terms of it being interior to the park, as opposed to something that would be closer to the road, that people can just stop by, you know, pu- pull over and into a parking lot and walk a short distance to the memorial. So I just wanted to make sure we have that discussion with you here.
All right, thank you. Uh, good evening, everyone, how are you? Um, we don't have, I'm not going to say there's a lot of locations that are going to be next to a parking lot that are going to be convenient for everybody. Um, never, I know that everyone here would love to see it at Nevers Park, but if we put it next to the parking lot, there's a lot of sporting events going on. It might be awful busy there. Uh, a couple ideas, and, and we, we haven't discussed this with the community center, so Andrea might get a little shell-shocked by this, so I apologize in advance. But they do have a large rear patio already on the back patio. We could, we could outline a heart on that and do some benches on that, if she were uh, acceptable with that. But, uh, you know, then you can park in the community center. It's in the back of the community center, so that's an area. Uh, you do have the flagpoles, that's, that's a possibility. We could do something over there. Um, a lot of the parks, I mean, Ry Street, you could do it, but you're, you're kind of going off of a beaten path when you go to Ry Street Park and you go interior like that. Um, I was talking to Dave, the parks manager, today. We were throwing some ideas around. Those are a couple that we came up with. I mean, we're open to suggestions, but it could be, it could be a tough area to find right, like, right next to a parking lot, like you're talking about.
Uh, can I throw out a, a suggestion? The new ramp to the town hall. I noticed that between that ramp and the library building, there is a small garden area there. Would that be an appropriate place for this kind of memorial?
Well, there, there is a garden area, because there's a, there's a, probably about a five or six-foot wide walkway that goes between the town hall and the library's upper main entrance.
Right.
Um, yeah, there, you know, that's, that's a little overgrown. It's got some years on it. I know, uh, we have a, a lighting fixture there that we're having some issues with, and there's a tree in the way that's there. There is a memorial tree in that left-hand corner, if you're looking at both the library and the town hall. That left-hand corner does have a memorial tree at the base of it with a large rock there, so.
Right.
Um, but that, that's a little bit further to the left-hand corner. There, you know, I've never laid anything out in there, but I guess that's a possibility. There is a lot of front lawn right there.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, that's a thought.
Okay.
There is some electrical, there is some electrical in there. I'm not sure where the fiber optic goes in from there, but.
Right. So I'm talking about that strip that's between the new ramp and the side wall of the library, and it goes straight back.
Oh, goes straight back by the, by the pine, the pine trees that were there. Uh, it's, it's not, it's, it's possible. I'm not sure of the area there, it's-
Okay.
It, it might be large enough, yeah.
Might be worth taking a look at then, thank you.
Yeah, I believe there's some, not for Cynthia, there's some, uh, ivy and things like that growing in there, and some small, small plants, nothing really substantial in there at all.
Right. Okay, any other discussion? Counselor Evans, any other comments on this project?
Looks like you got a few people, Andy.
Some others.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
Yes, Counselor Hockenberry seems to be dancing.
Woo-hoo! Um, thank you very much, uh, Mayor Paterna. Um, I mean, are there other parks that are like, uh, Michael Donnelly or Wapping? Or, um, or, I, I'm just concerned, I, I mean, I'd like it to be seen, but I'd also like it to be accessible, especially to people who are eighty-eight, ADA, it needs to be ADA accessible, because, and now, a lot of people don't understand that people, yes, people passed away, absolutely. We've, we've heard the, the numbers and the stories. But after, if someone had COVID, there's also a lot of, um, medical issues that these individuals have. And to be able to sit there, you'd like it to be accessible to them. There's a lot of muscular issues and, and such, or respiratory, so it's hard for them to even get somewhere. Um, and that's why this council would like to see it accessible to somehow. And, um, and like Counselor Manili had brought up, there's other, there's other things and, you know, that people have, have had, uh, during COVID, you know, that, you know, a place that's, I liked the place that you gave, because it's kind of private, it's covered with trees and the beautiful trees you chose. Um, but I, I mean, a lot of people are in Nevers Park, that, you know, that's a central park, that would be nice. But, um, I mean, I walk at Wapping every day, and that's a very peaceful place to go. But you'd like it to be, like, right up front and accessible. So there's many places. Um, there is a lot of lawn in the front of the town hall, uh, or over by the side parking lot where that bench is, um, in the back by the parking lot between the town hall and the annex building. Um, but you're the expert, the John Caldwell, so just some ideas.
One of the things that you want to keep in mind is, is the current grade that you're dealing with. Does it, does it have a lot of slope to it already? And, you know, you did mention the Donnelly property, the Sullivan Avenue parking lot of Donnelly property, to the north of that does have a large flat area, and is, it already does have a stone dust trail there. So, you know, that's another possibility over there. Uh, so, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
The spot that, uh, Mayor Paterna talked about too in the town, in the town hall. I can, I can get some measurements on that and see if something will fit in there too, also.
All right, thank, thank you, Mr. Caldwell. Thank you, Counselor Hockenberry. Counselor Manili, are you? No, okay, sorry. Any other comments? Counselor Evans?
I was just wondering too about Lawrence, is it Lawrence Road Park, Lawrence Park? Previously, we had men talked about that one as well. I don't know if there's any potential there, um, with the, it's right along the road. You have the trees, maybe it could kind of be incorporated along there.
Yeah, I think one of the things about Lawrence Road Park, it's, it's, it's pretty far off to one corner of the town. Um, but there, there is a parking lot, a gravel parking lot over there. There really are no trails, um, that go, that are like ADA accessible trails that are there that go into the park. I'm sure if we put it close enough to the park, we could do something like that to get to it. But you're going to go, you're going to end up going down Lawrence Road to get to the park itself. So it's not, it's, it's not like it hits the, the four corners that are there with Avery and Dart Hill and Lawrence. You're going to go interior of the park just a little bit.
Right. All right, thank you, Mr. Caldwell. Any other comments? Counselor Evans?
I was just going to say, based on the fact that we're still working on bringing funding in from businesses, um, and that we're trying to consider other locations, if we could, um, continue the discussion next meeting.
All right, that sounds fine. We can continue this discussion. All right, thank you very much. We will go on to item thirteen B. Counselor Lydecker?
Mr. Mayor, did you want to do thirteen A first?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thirteen A is a discussion about thirteen B, yes. Any comments or questions about the Board of Education budget? Deputy Mayor Pendleton, anything you want to bring up before we open up discussion?
No, sir, I just wanted the Board of Education budget to be on the agenda for anyone who had any questions about the Board of Education budget, before we move down and approve the budget.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Mayor Pendleton. Any questions about the Board of Ed budget? All right, we'll go on to item thirteen B. Counselor Lydecker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution adopting the Board of Education budget for fiscal year 2021, 2022. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby adopts a Board of Education budget with expenditures totaling seventy-seven million, nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars the fiscal year commencing on July one, 2021, and terminating on June thirty, 2022. A copy of which budget is on file on the Board of Education website.
Second.
Second.
All right, motion's been made in seconded. Discussion about this budget. Any questions? I, I would just add that before we go on to voting, that the, thank the Board of Education. Dr. Carter, our superintendent, and all the staff at the Board of Education who worked hard on this budget, and they have been consistently responsible over the last few years in presenting budgets that are fair and reasonable budgets to us. So we thank them for their hard work.
Yes.
All right, any other comments, questions about the Board of Ed budget? All right, if not, we'll go on to voting. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? Okay, motion carries. Budget has been approved. Item thirteen C. Counselor Evans?
Thirteen C. Resolution adopting the budget for the Special Revenue Recreation Fund for fiscal year 2021, 2022. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby adopts a Special Revenue Recreation Fund budget with expenditures totaling two million, seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and six dollars for the fiscal year commencing on July one, 2021, and terminating on June thirtieth, 2022. A copy of which budget is on file on the Town of South Windsor website,
Second.
All right, motion's been made in seconded. Questions about the Special Revenue Recreation Fund? Mr. Maniscalco, any clarification that we need before we go on to voting?
I don't think so, not on this item.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll go on to voting. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, motion is passed. Item thirteen D, a discussion item on the general government budget for 2021, 2022. Mr. Maniscalco, Ms. Perry are both here for any questions that we might have. Any discussion on the general government budget? Okay, Counselor Hockenberry?
Uh, thank you very much, uh, Mayor. Um, we had, um, Counselor, uh, Pendleton, Deputy Mayor Pendleton, uh, Counselor Snyder, Counselor, um, Kowalski, we've all were in a, uh, the budget workshop. And it was, it was a very interesting budget season that we went through. Um, and I, I'd like to thank, uh, the, um, town manager, Mr. Maniscalco, and Patty Perry, and her, you know, her group of people who worked diligently, um, as we all did, to find savings in, um, decreases in this budget in order to help us out. And, um, I was hoping that if I could, through you, Mayor, um, ask the town manager to explain, um, the differences that we found.
If that's good with the mayor, I'd be happy to-
Oh, yes. Certainly, Mr. Maniscalco, yes.
Yeah, so certainly, um, so essentially, as we worked our way through the budget, just in terms of the general government budget, first of all, um, there was a reduction, uh, identified, uh, proposed reduction of five hundred dollars to the Juvenile Fire Setters Commission. There is a identified proposed reduction of eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars to the Police Department car washes. There was a identified fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollar proposed reduction to eliminate the purchase of one police cruiser. They're still getting, uh, three additional police cruisers, as well as the associated equipment to equip the vehicle. Um, and then also a, uh, proposed reduction of thirty thousand dollars uh, to the rental line for the Wapping School, uh, to bring it, uh, in line with the actual expenditures that we've seen over the last five years. Um, additionally, out of the capital budget, uh, it was identified to, uh, reduce that, uh, con- the general fund contribution by two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and eliminate the fiber internet connection project to Pleasant Valley School and BMP, uh, with the intent that we could fund that project, uh, through some of the federal money, uh, that we're looking to, uh, receive shortly. Uh, because we do know that, uh, the, one of the accepted projects in that, in the money that we're looking at getting is, um, fiber internet, uh, connectivity projects. So, uh, that would reduce, uh, the overall budget, um, to, or the overall mill rate to thirty-seven point eight-six or- um to, or the overall mill rate to thirty-seven point eight-six or a decrease of point oh four mil.
Uh, through you, Mayor, thank you very much, Mr. Maniscalco, I appreciate that. And um, and I'm only asking this unless you're going to show it later on in the meeting. Um, there was a chart that you had given us and I wasn't sure if that was going to be um put on the website for uh the residents to see to understand um what you had just spoke about.
Um, certainly, I could actually, I think I've got it right here. If Mr. Roberts will let me share my screen, I can actually share it with all of you real, right now, and then we definitely will put it up on the uh town website.
It was a good visual, that's, that's why I'm asking.
Definitely.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Council Hockenberry.
So again, this is a basic overview of our uh, uh, the changes that are recommended by the council, so as you could see, and this is the overall process that the budget has gone through for the entire uh budget cycle. So you could see the department requests up here in darker green. You'd see the adjustments that I made to the budget, you could see my proposed totals. And then the adjustments made by the council, and then this would be the final proposal of the budget uh that you guys are talking about tonight, and then this is the actual percentage of that total that each of those different buckets make up.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Maniscalco, thank you, Council Hockenberry. Any other questions on the budget or this slide? I think it is a very effective slide, it really gives a good picture of the process of the budget, so thank you. All right, there's no further discussion, we'll go on to item.
Mayor, I believe Council Kowalski has something to say.
Council Kowalski, I'm sorry, I missed you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, it's because I'm such a tiny person, I disappear into the background.
Okay.
Uh, I just wanted to make a co, a couple of comments on the budget. Uh, I do want to thank Mr. Maniscalco uh for the work he did before even presenting uh the budget to us. There were a number of cuts to the proposed budgets to which, which I like to see coming after, after six budget cycles on the Board of Education where Dr. Carter approached it in the same manner. Uh, it's very helpful because we, we, what we're getting now already has a number of, of adjustments in there. Um, Mr. Maniscalco did a lot of the heavy work, heavy work as far as dealing with the department heads and uh setting goals for them to reach, and I appreciated the fact that Mr. Maniscalco did the dirty work that we didn't have to do, and I think in the past, sometimes the councils did have to do the dirty work. So I did appreciate that. The other comment I wanted to make too, as, as Counselor Hockenberry mentioned, there was a group of four of us. Um, so it was a bipartisan group. Um, I wasn't sure what to expect being the first budget cycle on the town side. Um, and if budgeting can be an enjoyable experience, this really was. Um, I want to thank Counselor uh Hockenberry, Deputy Mayor Pendleton, and Counselor Snyder for indulging me in my number nerdiness. Um, and it was, it was definitely a good experience. It was a group that worked very, very well together, um, and I just wanted to say thank you to the three of them, and thank you to the town manager for doing the heavy lifting, thank you.
All right, Counselor Kowalski, thank you very much, and I hope that, Mr. Roberts, do we have that recording so we can play back Mr. Kowalski saying budgeting is a pleasurable experience?
We certainly do.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Snyder?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I also did want to comment on the process again this year. Um, the four, you know, there's four of us that worked together, as it was said, Deputy Mayor Pendleton, Counselor Kowalski, Counselor Hockenberry, and myself. And this was, and Phil, Counselor Kowalski mo, mostly um identified that this was totally a bipartisan. So there's no credit to be taken by any one group, either Democrats or Republicans. I think the credit is that we worked together on this. Um, I think that's kind of a really big thing, and when I tell you we worked hour after hour after hour, page after page after line after line, um, we went line item with this. For us to find se, several hundred dollars in cost savings for the Police Department and washing their cars, um, that shows you the deep dark detail that we were in. So um, we did, the group did work well together, we met every Wednesday. Um, and we, we just stuck to our guns and we went every single chap, every single chapter, every single line. And um, Mr. Maniscalco joined us after a meeting or two because we just found that we had so many questions and needed more clarification that he was a great help joining us in these meetings. And I think I also really want to thank the rest of the counselors who trusted us to take the time and the energy and the effort to go through all of this. Um, and, and it just shows a lot of confidence in our colleagues amongst each other. Um, that I think when you're really, really working hard and you're focused on what's best for residents and for the town, you really don't have a party affiliation, you just have a commitment to the people that live in this town. So um, I was very proud of that, and this is like my twentieth budget season, so I'm kind of an old pro at it, but still learn something every single year. And it was a pleasure to have Counselor Kowalski join us, um, with his number knowledge and his pecking away at that little calculator, we were great. So thank you to everybody, especially thank you to my colleagues. Um, Counselor Lopez and Counselor Lydecker, Counselor Manili, Counselor Evans, um, who and Mayor Paterna, who trusted us to go ahead and, and get through this thing, so thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Counselor Snyder. Counselor Evans?
Thank you, so I'm really excited that this is our second year in a row with no tax increase and I'm not gonna take credit, but I'm the only one here that, I'm totally kidding, for the past two years has been involved in this budget, so it has to be me, right? Or I'm just.
Okay.
I do not take that credit.
Thank you, Counselor.
Done by a lot of people, um, and we did, we were in a spot, I feel like, for a few days there where everyone was very nervous, where we were in a kind of position where we were looking at either a tax increase or some cuts to things, potentially the education um funding, and I know so many of us were not in favor of that, um, so I'm really glad that we were come up, were able to come with a, up with a creative way um to do that, and I think by mentioning the American um relief funds, you know, that that was very helpful, and I, and I think mine, smarter than mine knew how to do that more effectively, but I think it was really important that we, we came up with that creative way um to, to still have no tax increase, so I'm really excited about that for our second year in a row, so thank you to everyone for your hard work.
Thank you, Counselor Evans. Counselor Manili?
Thank you, um, I want to thank um the town staff, uh, town manager Patty Perry, Patty Perry and, and all the councils, and especially our four um colleague councils who really, you know, get into this budget item by item, I give you a lot of credit, very, very impressive. As Mr. Maniscalco and whoever else helped you on your um, your slide presentations, I know she did them yourself and then out of boy, but my, my thing was, was very, very clear and concise. Um, and, and Dr. Carter's, um, her slide presentation was also clear and concise. I, it just made it very, very easy, easy to follow, and it was all upfront, I hate using that word transparency because it's like shared services, it just makes people think like horrible things, but there, there was no more secret this time. Um, for a while there on, in past budgets, long before um a lot of people's tenure, it was a big secret until the night it came out, so I'm glad that we're, we've moved forward from that way of doing business and it's now all upfront and, and everybody's a part of it and, and the way it was organized and, and broken up over the the main answer to the meetings, um, it was very, very impressive and, and the fact that everybody was able to work together, also very impressive, thank you.
All right, thank you, Counselor Manili. Uh, any other comments? I, I'd like to add, yes, Deputy Mayor Pendleton?
No, go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, well, I just want to add my comments to Mr. Maniscalco, Mr. Roberts, and Ms. Perry, our town manager and two assistant town managers who, who under their leadership work with the town staff to once again bring in a, a reasonable budget to the council so that you made our jobs a lot easier, as Counselor Kowalski uh pointed out. You folks did the heavy lis, lifting before it got to us, uh, but we still had to deal with some issues. And I think for the second year in a row, we have no tax increase. We have no mill rate increase, we have no sewer fee increase. And also, no cuts in programs and services to the people of this town. You can't get there, you can't get there unless the people on this meeting tonight have respect for one another and work as colleagues to reach that kind of a goal. So thank you all for the great work you've done to put this budget together, appreciate it. Mr. Maniscalco, thank you and the town staff for the amazing work that you did. So thank you. Okay, now Deputy Mayor Pendleton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just want to copy everything that the mayor just said, so I don't have to re-say everything, it was awesome, Mr. Mayor, thank you. But I do want to say, you know, Magic Mike with his magical tool trying to figure out the numbers and our numbers guy Phil in our meeting, you know, they both have two names, the numbers guy and the magical tools and the numbers guy, so I had a great time working on the subcommittee with Counselor Hockenberry and Counselor Snyder and Counselor Kowalski. Um, it was great, we had a good time and it, a budget was fun, believe it, it was fun. Um, and it was fun finding things, and it was fun pulling out calculators and doing numbers and we did have, really did have a good time, we took it very seriously also. Um, so I think it's a really great process that this council, that the councils have adapted to have a budget subcommittee to go line by line and then bring the numbers back and work it along the way. There was a, a little kink in the, in the process here with the ECS funding, but we figured that out. Um, thanks to Counselor Snyder who was on Capitol, who came up with a great idea on figuring out some of the capital funding and taking care of that. And um, yes, we do have a decreased mill rate this year, along with last year, we had a decreased mill rate, so that's what we all do on this council, is we work for the citizens of South Windsor. And we only have two jobs on this council, really, and one is to set the budget and one is to do our personnel evaluations. And I think we did a really fabulous job again this year, and I congratulate all the town staff, Mr. Roberts, Patty Perry, Ms. Perry, Ms. Vanessa Perry, and um town manager Mike, thank you.
Yes, thank you, and thank you Deputy Mayor Pendleton, I'm gonna, I'm gonna add, because there's always confusions with the, the Perry name, so I'm also gonna, Ms. Patty Perry, thank you for your hard work in the finance department, appreciate it very much. And uh, Mr. Roberts, I want to, I want to copy that recording because now we've had two counselors who have said budgeting is fun, so let's make sure we save that, okay? Thank you, any other comments? All right, I think we'll go on to the next item. Which is item thirteen E. Counselor Snyder, if I haven't jumped something over, no?
No, you're good, Mr. Mayor.
All right, okay.
And thank you.
Counselor Snyder, yes.
You're good, and thank you. Um, com, item thirteen E, resolution adopting the capital projects budget for the fiscal year, for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby adopts a capital projects budget with general fund contribution totaling one million, nine hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars for the fiscal year commencing on July one, twenty twenty-one and terminating on June thirty, twenty twenty-two. A copy of which bud, a copy of which budget is on file on the Town of South Windsor website.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded, you, you may have all noticed from your agenda that the, the terms general fund was inserted there just as a correction, thank you, Counselor Snyder. All right, any questions about this? Counselor Snyder?
Yes, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, these, we were able, as, as uh the town manager mentioned earlier, we were able to take a project that fits into the federal, um, I guess is, is this the, no, this is the federal, um.
It's the American Rescue Plan.
American Rescue Plan. Uh, we were able to take a, a project out of capital projects um that's actually under the direction of um Assistant Town Manager Scott Roberts, which would qualify for that funding that's coming in. Um, which would be close to like seven million dollars, I think, from that, that money coming in, which still hasn't gotten here yet. Um, so that was, that allowed us to be able to um remove that from capital projects, but I did want to point out, Mr. Maniscalco, if you could just um, point out that what we are starting to put into capital projects, town hall projects. Projects that we need to do for town hall, and while there is quite a few of them, um, I believe, Mr. Maniscalco, if you can just let the public know what we have in this capital projects budget um that addresses for the town hall, I believe it's the um HVAC system?
Yeah, so that's actually in the operating budget that we put the uh HVAC system, because that has to happen a little sooner. Um, but we are going to be looking at adding a number of um projects in over the coming years. Um, especially next year, uh, it's just trying to look and see if there was any, there's a.
They talked about windows and for next year possibly.
Yeah, there's windows, I believe the, the roof, if we can afford to do the, the roof and the windows together, we need to actually do um um, all the grout in between all the bricking uh on the outside needs to get redone. Um, a lot of that sort of stuff, so, you know, over the coming years, uh, it, I would expect that this, this budget's gonna have to accommodate for some pretty significant uh projects, so.
And I heard that loud and clear from many, many residents that, you know, if the town hall needs to get fixed, well, we haven't done it, let's just start addressing it project by project, and um, as a town counselor at this time, and as a capital projects member for over twenty years, um, that's where we have to start applying um our interests and our focus. And we also need to continue to fund capital projects. Um, at one year, not too long ago, it was down to a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. So it's a healthy budget now and it continues to grow based on some ordinances that we'll put in place. And um, and I'm just happy to, to know that we are addressing many, many projects. Um, Mr. Maniscalco, is it possible, do we, we have a list of our capital projects? Now, do we have that list, actually, Mr. Roberts might be able to address it as well. Um, I'd like to put a, make sure we, there's a list of all the projects that are approved in this one point nine million dollar dollar amount, maybe an easy to read Excel sheet up on the website for people?
Yeah, I think we've got a, I think we've got a shortened version that um everybody can see. Um, it's included it for, for like, uh, for this year's capital projects, not the ones that are currently, you know, already approved, so it would just be this year's, I think it's like seventeen projects.
Mr. Mayor, I do have the slide presentation that we shared at the last meeting.
Right, I could use the slide presentation as well.
That's up there as well, and then the full capital projects going out five years, I think we're at sixty-nine million or sixty-eight million, if I remember that correctly.
Yeah, some, a dollar amount around that.
Okay, so I just want um to be sure that you can go on to the website and click on it and, and get to it easily, so if people want to know what's getting done this year, here's what it is. So, thank you, and, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Snyder. Uh, is, any other questions about that resolution? All right, if none, this is the uh capital projects budget we're adopting, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, motion carries. We will go on to item thirteen F, and that is Counsel Manili.
Thank you, thirteen F, resolution adopting general government budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Be it resolved, South Windsor Town Council hereby adopts a general government budget with expenditures totaling, totaling forty-eight million, eighty-three thousand, four hundred and seventy-two for fiscal year commencing July one, twenty twenty-one and terminating June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. A copy of said budget is on file with, on the South Windsor Town website.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded, any questions about the budget? Any comments? All right, if none, we'll go on to voting. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, the motion carries, the budget is passed. And item thirteen G, Deputy Mayor Pendleton?
Thirteen G, resolution setting the tax rate for fiscal year twenty twenty-one slash twenty twenty-two. Be it resolved that the tax rate of thirty-seven point eight-six mils will be levied on the grand list of October one, twenty twenty, based upon total revenues excluding current taxes of seventeen million, five hundred and eighty-five thousand, five hundred and twenty-six dollars, which includes an appropriation from fund balance in the amount of zero dollars and an appropriation from the Tax Stabilization Fund in the amount of five, five hundred thousand dollars to finance total. to finance total expenditures of one million twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and sixty-six, seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand, made up of the Board of Education's budget of seventy-seven million nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand eight hundred and forty-four, a capital projects budget of one, one million nine hundred and twenty-four, four hundred and twenty-seven, I'm sorry, seventy-two, and a general government budget of forty-eight million eighty-three, four seventy-two, all of which have been adopted by the South Windsor Town Council for the fiscal year commencing on July one, twenty twenty-one and terminating on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. This is setting the tax rate and the thirty-seven point eight-six mils. Any questions about this? Okay. Deputy Mayor Pendleton, any comment before we go on to voting? All right. Thank you. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, motion is passed. And we will move on to item thirteen H, Council Kibowski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thirteen H, resolution appointing a ratemaker for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two and postponing consideration of this motion until the Town Council's next regularly scheduled meeting. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby appoints Michael Maniscalco, Town Manager, as ratemaker for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two and postpones consideration of this motion until the Town Council's next regularly scheduled meeting.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Any questions about this? All right, if not, we'll go on to voting. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, motion carries. We will move on to item thirteen I, Council Hockenberry.
Thank you, Mayor, through you. Resolution waiving competitive bidding for consulting services to create an affordable housing plan. Whereas, the Town of South Windsor is required to prepare an affordable housing plan under the provisions of Connecticut General Statutes eight dash thirty J and submit it to the Connecticut Department of Housing by July first, twenty twenty-two. And whereas, the town is pursuing the services of a consultant to assist in the development of an affordable housing plan and has established a fifteen thousand dollar budget. And whereas, an RFP was issued on March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one with a closing date of Monday, April twelfth, twenty twenty-one. And whereas, the town did not receive any proposals for this work and the preparation of this study can only be performed by certain firms. And whereas, the town has contacted a consulting firm familiar with preparing affordable housing plans who has also worked previously in South Windsor on the plan of conservation and development to review the challenges with the current proposal. And whereas, the consultant presented a modified scope of work suggesting changes to the original timeframes and more clearly defining the consultant's role in public process. And whereas, the consultant has agreed to prepare the affordable housing plan for the original budgeted amount of fifteen thousand dollars. Now, the, therefore, be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby waives competitive bidding for the services of a consultant to develop an affordable housing plan. And be it further resolved that the Town Council authorizes Town Manager Michael Maniscalco to sign any agreements necessary to hire a consultant to perform this work.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Comments, questions? Council Snyder.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was fortunate enough as liaison for planning and zoning, Michelle Leif, our, our town planner, had requested that I serve on a, it was just a very mini committee about going over different things that we need to do to meet this requirement of the affordable, affordable housing plan. All one hundred and sixty-nine towns in Connecticut have to do this. And I usually, you know, always consider or kind of think about not doing a bid. But Michelle has gone through the process, Michelle Leif has gone through the process. She went through everything, got no returns and has discussed different, different types of app plans or that we can do. And I think that I absolutely one hundred percent support Michelle. And this, Michelle's probably one of the best planners ever, ever. Not only in Connecticut, but ever. And this is absolutely the best way to go. We need to get going on this thing and we need to get it, get it in, in the works because it's, it's gonna take a long time. And how we, how the Town of South Windsor handles affordable housing in the future is something that will affect every resident. So, Michelle has a high degree of integrity and she's very familiar with what has to be done and she's worked with this group before. So, I just wanted to let my fellow counselors know that this is really the best way to go because we need to, we need to tackle this as all other one hundred and sixty-eight towns are right now. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Council Snyder. Deputy Mayor Pendleton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe Michelle Leif is, is on the phone or here in our meeting, yes?
Yes, she is.
I think she is with us, yes.
I don't hear her, but I see her name. Hi, Michelle.
She might be having some challenges with her connection. She is out of town.
How you doing?
Oh, there we go.
All right, thanks for joining us, I appreciate that. Michelle, just a question. I know years ago, South Windsor built affordable housing and I know at that time there was some type of a plan that we had. Would this person, this consulting firm, take what we had back in, gosh, I don't even remember, eighty-seven, I think. I came to the council asking for affordable housing. And I know something was created back in the early nineties. Is, would they take that and also work with that plan on what we presently have and work off of that to find more?
Yes, Council, Deputy Mayor, at that time, we really, the plan that we've created didn't quite meet the statutory requirements of affordable housing. So, a lot of the units that we created in the early nineties did not give us the credit that you need to have them be deep restricted for the forty years. This would be kind of a holistic look at our housing in general and then specifically looking at what kinds of maybe zoning regulations we need to look at, but also maybe kind of policies there might be that the Town Council might be involved in and helping to create affordable housing. So, we definitely would build on all the work that we've done with previous plans and work, but this would be kind of a new look at moving forward and seeing the best way to tackle increasing the unit counts in our town for affordable housing. But it would be a very global look at, at the past as well as looking into the future.
That's great, I, I, I'm, I'm happy to hear that, that's great. And knowing at that one time, I couldn't afford to live in town because there was no affordable housing. So, I'm happy now that there is some now and that we'll be looking at it for the future. So, I, I would, I have no problem approving this, Mr. Mayor, voting yes for this.
All right, thank you. Deputy Mayor Pendleton. Thank you, Ms. Leif, for joining us tonight, appreciate it very much. I want to thank Commissioner Dexter who sent us a letter tonight and supported this and Chairperson Bart Pasakonis who, both of them have been very vocal advocates for affordable housing plans in South Windsor. So, I appreciate their support and their work on this. And I know there are other members of planning and zoning who have also supported this, but it seems like those two have been most vocal, so thank you. All right, any other comments or questions about this? All right, if not, we'll go on to voting. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, the motion carries, it's passed.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you, Ms. Leif. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Take care now.
All right, good night. We'll go on to item thirteen J, Council Meneely.
Thank you. Resolution accepting the resignation of Eric Dabrowski, Republican, from the Blight Property Appeals Board. Be it resolved, the South Windsor Town Council hereby accepts with regret the resignation of Eric Dabrowski, Republican, from the Blight Property Appeals Board effective April nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. And be it further resolved, South Windsor Town Council extends thanks to Eric Dabrowski for the time he has dedicated to serving his community by his membership to the Blight Property Appeals Board. And I want to say thank you to Eric for all his hard work. It's not, it's not a friendly job, but I wanted to make sure that he knew that he was appreciated and good luck to him in the future.
All right, thank you, Council Meneely. Is there a second? Sorry.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Thank you, Council Meneely, for that comment and want to add my thanks to Mr. Dabrowski. He's, he's worked on a couple of commissions and he's a very dedicated resident in South Windsor, so thanks to him. Any other comments or questions? If not, we'll go on to voting. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, nay? All right. We will go to item thirteen K and that is Council Kibowski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thirteen K, resolution appointing Megan Powell, Republican, an alternate to the Historic District Commission and postponing consideration of this motion until the Town Council's next regularly scheduled meeting. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby appoints Megan Powell, Republican, an alternate to the Historic District Commission for a term ending November thirtieth, twenty twenty-two to fill the unexpired term of Philip Kibowski and postpones consideration of this motion until the Town Council's next regularly scheduled meeting.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Any questions? If not, we'll go on to voting. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, thank you. And thirteen L, Council Snyder.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thirteen L, resolution appointing James Ainsworth to the Blight Property Appeals Board and postponing consideration of this motion until the Town Council's next regularly scheduled meeting. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby appoints James Ainsworth to the Blight Property Appeals Board for a term ending November thirty, twenty twenty-four to fill the unexpired term of Eric Dabrowski and postpones consideration of this motion until the Town Council's next regularly scheduled meeting.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Any questions? If not, we'll go on to voting. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, thank you. And item thirteen M, a discussion item, Deputy Mayor Pendleton.
Mr. Mayor, I asked for this to be on for the last time so we can create the subcommittee and have volunteers, folks volunteer to be on the subcommittee for the flag, flying policy, please.
All right, Deputy Mayor Pendleton, will you be chairing that committee?
Oh, sure, Mr. Mayor, absolutely.
All right. Thank you. So, I'm, I'm looking for two more volunteers, one Democrat, one Republican, to join that committee. We're gonna review the policy and then come back with a recommendation.
Look, Cesar and Lisa.
All right.
Oh, stop it now.
Council Meneely. All right, thank you.
Nice.
All right, so Deputy Mayor, if you would call the first meeting and let us know what the progress is at.
Sure, Mr. Mayor, no problem.
Not next meeting, but maybe during the June meeting time.
Sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thirteen N, discussion item on hybrid public meetings. Mr. Maniscalco.
Thank you. I think as we've discussed in the previous meeting that we're working on trying to get this put together and come to, come up with some solutions to move this forward. One of the challenges we are running across and trying to get hybrid meetings together, you know, unfortunately, Mr. Roberts is being run ragged with public virtual meetings as well as the rest of his staff. So, we are gonna try to work out some numbers as to what it might look like to actually look for an additional person who's probably gonna work from what we're looking at, probably be somewhere around like maybe seven to eleven to be available because I, I think that the thing that everybody needs to remember is while there's only one council meeting that's occurring twice a month, there's also a lot of committee meetings that are occurring, commission meetings that are occurring, board meetings that are occurring that are requiring both Mr. Roberts and the rest of his staff to start these meetings. And I think if anybody has been on any of these meetings, you've seen oftentimes they're starting the meetings from their cars, starting them from family events, starting them from their homes, starting them from all kinds of other places and trying to keep things running. Additionally, some staff actually have to come to this building in order to be able to broadcast them whether it, when Frontier was operational, although that's a possibility that that might come back or through Facebook accounts and other things. So, it, it is a possibility that we may need to bring on some extra help in order to do that, which will be a cost to the town. But I think in order to make sure that everybody has the opportunity to get into a, a, a meeting and participate in the meeting, we will have to offer hybrid meetings moving forward. So, that's kind of the quick and dirty update I do have at this point. But as soon as we kind of get a little more of that stuff ironed out, we'll bring it all forward to you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Maniscalco. Questions? Council Snyder.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mike, are we, when are you planning to have our first in-person meeting?
So, my hope is after May nineteenth, we would open up in-person meetings to the council. So, whenever your first meeting would be after that, I'm just trying to look at the calendar.
Probably the first, June, right?
By June, yeah.
It's the first Monday in June.
June seventh would be your first meeting.
Okay. Okay, so that should give you enough time to be able to accommodate council members that may not be able to be in person yet.
That's our hope, yep. Yeah, we should be able to hit that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Council Snyder. Any other questions for Mr. Maniscalco? All right, so I'm assuming we'll get a report at the next May meeting but not be ready to go until June.
Correct.
An update, I mean.
Council Meneely had something.
Yes, Council Meneely.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Town Manager, do you need a list of people who are not ready to meet in person or do you already know who we are?
Not right now. And I'm not sure we're going to need to have a list of that. It'll just be an option being offered to everybody. But if it does get to a point where we need to ask that, we will certainly email that out.
All right, thank you, Council Meneely. Any other questions? All right, if not, we'll go on to the next item. We do not have an ordinance for this evening's meeting. We do have another public input session, so I'll start. Mr. Roberts, do we have any callers? We do not, Mr. Mayor. All right, thank you, Mr. Roberts. Mr. Maniscalco, any other emails that have come in?
I do not have anything else.
All right, thank you. Then we'll move on to the next item and that is communications from the council. Anybody have any communications for the council? All right, Council Hockenberry.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Mayor Paterna, Deputy Mayor Pendleton, Town Manager and all the town staff and all of the colleagues I've worked with for the last six years. Excuse my tears. It's come, I've come to a crossroad in my life and it's been difficult to make this decision on how I will dedicate my time to helping others as I have in the last six years. I've had two years on the Board of Ed and I've had four, well, three and three quarters on the Town Council. I've loved every bit of my work. I've done my work to better the town of South Windsor and I would never have been able to do it with such wonderful people as you are here tonight and have on the Board of Ed and all the commissions and the committees I've been on. And I was told it's only two meetings a month. Well, it was more than two meetings a month, many hours of dedication, many hours of dedication away from my family and away from one thing that has meant a lot to me. I have been working since two thousand twelve on a nonprofit business for, with the Sisters of Mercy and I'm a dressmaker and have been for thirty years. I'm going to be a South Windsor small business owner, but I will not be a Town Counselor as of eleven fifty-nine PM this evening. I want to thank every single one of you. You've been my mentors, you've been my friends, you've been my enemies during some meetings. You've been my mentors, you've been my friends, you've been my enemies during some meetings. I've learned from all of it and you've made me a better person. I'm happy that I will still be able to give back to the town of South Windsor. I will be working with the youth. I will be working with young women who do not have. And I'm taking my sewing business and bringing that back to the community. You will see more of me, but in a different venue. I wanted to thank every single one of you. I want to say that one of the best projects I have ever done on the town council was the project of getting a new town manager. Not that Matt Gallagher was a bad guy, but it was a project I worked on with all of you. And we worked together and we worked hard and we had a lot of questions because we knew that position was important to run our town. And Mr. Maniscalco, I think you're doing a great job. Mr. Assistant Manager Scott Roberts and Vanessa Perry, you are a great addition to supporting our town manager. I thank all the staff who's helped. I help, I, I want to give the biggest thanks to Debbie Reed, our Clerk of the Council, who has tirelessly received many phone calls, many emails from all of us. I don't know how she does her job, but I want to thank you, Debbie. I thank the residents who've written me, who've called me, who've asked for help. And I've done the best I could. And the best I could is only because I work with the best colleagues here. So I'm signing off. Peace be with you and thank you for working with me. I don't have a mic, but I drop it.
Councilor Hockenberry. Thank you for all your work, all these years, and your commitment to this community and your dedication to helping people in this town in many different ways. You always seem to search out ways to find some new way to help people in this town. That was always your goal. So we, we thank you. We appreciate all your hours and your commitment. But thank you very much for being part of this team, both here and on the Board of Education.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilor Manili.
Councilor Hockenberry, I want to give you a lot of credit for asking questions to increase your knowledge in, in every, almost every aspect of this so-called job that we all undertake and it's not two meetings a month. But I, I believe you've learned a lot from this and any part that we could have done to help you grow in that area. I, I hope, I hope you continue to learn and grow as you move on from here. Best of luck to you.
Thank you.
Councilor Kobowski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilor Hockenberry, so I'm noticing a trend. When we work together on the Board of Ed, you left. And I come up on the town council and now you're leaving. But I just wanted to say, I'm, I'm sure our paths are going to cross again and it really has been a pleasure working with you on both the Board of Ed and the town council. And I wish you the absolute best of luck.
Thank you, Mr. Kobowski.
Councilor Snyder.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. MJ, I'm so sorry, I was, I'm totally socked. But I tell you, we've known each other and worked together since our kids were in first grade. So, and, and second grade. So I, you know, it's always been a pleasure to work with you and, and you really do bring a lot to, to anything you endeavor. You always bring a lot of passion to it. And, and don't ever lose that passion. But I want to wish you the absolute best of luck and best wishes on everything that you're planning to do forward. And you have a whole bunch of us that are, will still be here. And if you need anything, you know you can call on us. So thank you and best of luck.
Thank you so, so very much, Davis.
Yeah. Councilor Hockenberry, we all wish you the best of luck. I just want to remind you that there will be some commission seats with vacancies in the future and they only meet once a month.
Yeah, right. I, I have to say that there's one thing I want to say to the residents. We sit up here hours, sometimes more hours than we want to. We work really hard on the policies and even the conflicting ones that, this referendum was a good example. For me, I understood who the residents are and what they need and what their wants are and what they want to spend their tax dollars on. And throughout the years, I always hear, oh, they're, they get paid so much or they're making all these deals. And I just want to, and for the last moment, I would just like to say the only payment this and all the other councils receive is the satisfaction of our town residents. We don't get paid, we don't get paid any financial money. And I, I, that's one thing I respect about all of us is that we come to the meeting, okay, dinner's done, like, no one talked to me, you know, here we go. The big zero, zero. And, you know, we drive to the town hall when they were in, when we were during COVID. We were, you know, getting dressed, you guys don't know I have pajama bottoms on. But, you know, it's like we always look our best for our town and we don't get paid. The only payment we get, which is the biggest priceless payment that we can have, is progress and satisfaction and services for the residents of South Windsor. And I'm so proud to be part of it with all of you, so thank you.
Oh, good luck.
Big party at my house, only kidding.
Councilor Hockenberry. All right, any other, any other comments? All right, we do not have an executive session. And Councilor Manili, with all due respect, if you don't mind, can I ask Councilor Hockenberry to offer the motion to adjourn and you can be the second tonight?
Thank you, Lisa. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right.
Thank you.
Motion's been made and seconded. Best of luck to you, Councilor Hockenberry. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, good night. Thank you all for your great work on this budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, MJ.
Night, all.